Hello and welcome to the Bothell Planning Commission. This evening is Wednesday, February eighth at six P M. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. All commissioners are here and accounted for with the exception of Commissioners Clark and Stedman, which are absent and excused. Are there any non-agenda public comments? Okay, and so there's none at this time. Approval of minutes, there are none tonight. And is there any new business?
No.
Okay. And no public hearing tonight, so with that, we'll go ahead and jump into the study session, which is a continuation of the review of the housing strategy update. And we are joined with Arch tonight as well as staff with community development. Thanks for joining us tonight, guys, and with that, I'll hand it over to, I guess, Dave Boyd.
Yeah, thank you, and I just wanted to say that we had a good discussion on housing at this past weekend's council retreat. Arthur was there for that as well. So it was kind of a check, an opportunity to check in to report on the work that Planning Commission's been doing to date and what the process is going forward and also to get there some input from the council. So I think that was, that was useful. And with that, we're into our third session here and starting to get into some discussion of some of the strategies. So I'll turn it over to Arthur to go through the presentation and lead the discussion.
Sure. Evening. So, are we on here? I assume we are. This is sort of now, we are hoping you're getting to the point you're ready to really start thinking about strategies and looking at more concrete ideas. But this is the last night before we start looking at specific strategies. This is an attempt tonight, and we apologize for the glitch in not getting you the cover memo until today. And, but it's basically an attempt to sort of help you kind of pull together the different perspectives that we've talked about over the last couple of meetings and see whether or not, and that will hopefully maybe give you context for thinking about strategies from sort of a big picture and how they would fit into sort of community objectives. So what we want to do tonight is very briefly sort of take some of the things we talked about earlier and truncate them and get them sort of even more concise and more, what are the high level points? And see if those are ringing true from how your minds are thinking about housing? And then seeing whether or not with review of that, are we ready to sort of, you're ready to sort of jump in and start being able to evaluate strategies from the point of view of what should we be prioritizing from, looking, understanding community needs, et cetera. So that's really what the purpose of tonight is. Now, we also have, at the end of the agenda, wanted to give you a report back on some thoughts on outreach. We've had some meetings with other staff and we sort of have a short proposal on what to cover in outreach. So we wanted to take a few minutes also at the end of the meeting to talk about that as well. Okay? So, so the first slide, any questions before we jump in? Okay. So the first slide is, and this is, most of what I'm putting up on screen is in the packet from the staff memorandum. The first is just sort of a reminder of what is the housing strategy? And it's really, this is, we gave, most of this language was in the statement we gave you earlier, but we also added a little bit of language from comprehensive plan and stuff. But basically, it says, it's, the purpose is to identify, analyze, and prioritize how and when specific strategies should be considered. So it's not the solutions to the strategies, but rather prioritize how they get looked at over the next few years. We also added in because of the conversations, we will actively engage the broader community to try to help fully understand what the housing needs are to sort of help inform that process. And then, again, it is not a formal document, though it will be, I mean, and from the point of view, it is not part of the comprehensive plan. It is a document, though, that you will be making a recommendation. It will go to the full council and then the council will bless it by resolution or something along those lines. And its objective is to help advance the housing goals and objectives in the housing element. Okay, so some people have called it a work program or an agenda for strategies. We'll have a big list of strategies and the idea isn't necessarily to get rid of strategies, it's to figure out which ones rise to the top based on perspectives of needs or policies and elements in the comprehensive plan. Okay? So does that make sense, or does anyone have any questions or comments about that? Okay. All right, so next is, we, in your packet, you have a table and actually is responsible for working on this mostly. And what we've done here on page two of the staff memo is highlighted, and a little bit of paraphrasing, especially in the policy sections, but tried to call out primary goals in the housing element and then some policies that we think help summarize this discussion of what strategies make the most sense and helping to prioritize those. So the three main goals that we highlighted or identified, which are in the left column and are up on the screen here, is that you have residential neighborhoods have vitality and stable character. Second one is people wanting to live in Bothell have a variety of active, attractive housing options. And then the third is people of all economic levels have affordable housing opportunities throughout Bothell. So those are sort of goal, high-level statements. And then on the other side, we've listed about eight kind of summaries of policies. And at the end of each of those statements, we have put in parentheses where, which policies we are taking those from. So we're really trying to boil it down to give you sort of a one-page thing that you can refer to from time to time to sort of help give you sort of a guide map of the housing, you know, the one pager guide map to the whole housing element. We did include as an attachment, all of, to this packet, all of the housing goals and policies verbatim so that you have those as well. But some of the things that we are trying to highlight here is new development will be compatible with surrounding development and enhance the community's image. So that helps deal with that first goal. Support preservation of existing housing, particularly homes with historic significant manufactured housing and other affordable housing. Next is promote adequate supplies of housing in types and densities appropriate to market demand, particularly downtown and near other transportation and job centers. Next one is encourage accessory dwelling units with compatibility with surrounding homes. Another one strive to meet the city's proportionate share of countywide housing needs for very low, low and moderate income throughout the city and especially in places with good pedestrian access. Support special needs housing throughout the city and promote equitable distribution across the region. Support a range of affordable housing options and other assistance that help homeless families and individuals move to long-term independence and promote housing options, programs and services that enable seniors to live in their homes or their neighborhoods and support a range of housing types for lower-income seniors. So, sort of open it up for comment and response to how you, what you think of this. Does it feel like a good summary, or are there things that you think shouldn't be highlighted that are here or things that are missed or anything along those lines?
Mr. Zorans?
Well, I appreciated the comment about enabling seniors to continue living in their homes because, because that's ownership for them and recognizing that I think is important. But I did have a question on E, points E and F, because I know Arch's focus is King County. So I'm gonna ask you, is, is our intention to be counties-wide? Or just King County-specific?
Okay.
And for, for point E and then point F, when we say across the region, do we mean the King County portion or King County all of Bothell proper or all the Arch?
So what we're saying, the reason for using the regional language on those two is for a couple of reasons. Okay, and it doesn't mean you're not looking for opportunities in your community, but you're understanding that when you're, especially dealing with homelessness and dealing with special needs populations, the groups that are providing the housing serving them, they're not looking just at Bothell, they're usually, like Hope Link serves all of East King County.
Right.
And we also have funding that's being coordinated that these organizations rely on in which, in the last ten years, especially for homelessness, we're trying to be intentional in how we invest resources and the kinds of ways we're reacting to homelessness. So what we're, what we at Arch have said is that if we are funding homeless even in East King County, we want to make sure it's consistent with the overall planning efforts that are going on at the county level to plan for and address homelessness. It doesn't mean we don't want stuff in East King County, or we don't want it in particular cities, but if we do fund something in Bothell or in Woodinville or in Kirkland, we want it to tie into that regional system.
I understand. So I guess my question here is, is that as we go through and look at affordable housing, do we as commissioners think broader and, and how it would impact Snohomish County?
Yes.
Or do we just consider Bothell's participation with Arch programs that are going on?
So we, we-
What is it that you would like us to do?
Both, whatever, I mean, you are part of a system, and you're also part of a Snohomish County system. So being cognizant of both is appropriate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Arthur, I have a quick question. Thanks for, thanks for the table that you provided with us, for us. One thing I would, I don't, I don't know quite how to get here, and maybe this is something you can help us with, not necessarily just tonight, but going forward. I think one of the things that I believe would touch on some of these points you made here, that's always been kind of a concern to me, is that it, it's wonderful seeing, you know, all the, the new development and home, homes and units created for, for people of all economic levels. Well, I guess it's, we haven't done, we, we're producing more inventory, which is good. One of the concerns to me and a lot of people I've spoken with in the community are the, is the fact of, I guess, you know, very nice homes that, or you know, are maybe thirty or forty years old that, that are made way for new development for. And do you know, I guess, maybe if you give us some direction on, you know, other communities, these aren't necessarily historically significant homes, but, but I think they are high-quality homes and maybe they need, you know, some new double, triple-pane windows, something like that, a new roof. But besides that, you know, they're pretty, pretty solid. And I think when a new development goes in, I mean, it can change the character quite greatly of a neighborhood. When there's, you know, there's a large acreage and there's maybe two or three homes on it and they're, they're cleared for the new development. I mean, is there, is there a way to get to, you know, where we can create the additional housing that we're putting in, but also preserve some, see, I, I guess what I'm getting at is I feel like it touches on a lot of these points with regards to environmental sustainability, because the most sustainable house is the one that's already there, pretty much. And also being compatible with, you know, with, with the neighborhoods. And I guess, and, and thirdly, is that I feel like a lot of the, the older homes that aren't maybe in the price range of some of the newer developments, newer housing, in my mind, that's kind of a, that's kind of an inventory of affordable housing that we already have. Instead of, you know, as we try to approach, and so I don't know how cities have, you know, maybe you could touch on later or now, you know, maybe later on after you've gone through the presentation on how, you know, to preserve some more of that stock without getting in the way of the, of the developer, being able to, you know, build development with it and make a profit on it.
I think that's been one of the biggest challenges I've watched cities struggle with and not have good answers to in East King County. I tried to buy the old house behind me, the old pool house to the house that was subdivided. My neighborhood, for whatever reason, they did keep two of the old homes, right? Or they became three old homes with them, I renew something, that's thirty years ago though still. And the one behind me, I tried to buy so I could keep it and then just do a small addition, and I got beat out by the market. Right now, another, the other house is being sold and it's the lot they made is just big enough to be two and everything we're hearing is we're gonna tear it down to build two new homes. And the dilemma is private property rights. Okay, is that, yeah, you love that, but when that person's looking at the economics of their property, that plays out pretty strongly. And so that's an interesting question. I think what we can do is note that and see whether or not we can try to do some research and see if anyone's had any luck with it. I happen to go to a national work group every two months, and I'm going this Friday, and I people, see people from all over the country in areas like ours. And I'm gonna ask them, I'll ask them, you know, I'll see if that, but we'll, this is a topic area maybe we can try to do some research, because it's not the first time we've heard it from you, this group. And we do have preservation as one of the areas, you know, as we get into the other, the section, to the theme that we hear. So I think it's worth some research, but I don't know if I, I don't know off the top of my head any good answers.
Got it, and maybe as we look at it in the future possibly, I appreciate your adding that on is to maybe look at it as some, some type of a developer incentive to that preserving the stock.
Right, and the, the only thing I've seen that comes even close to it, and I don't know if there's, you know, sometimes they say like replacement housing, but Redmond did is in one part of their town, which has older homes, a lot of them that are being redeveloped, is they require the new developments that some of the units must be smaller, have a maximum size. So like ten percent of the units must be small. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean they're not tearing the old ones down, but at least it's forcing, and, and their motivation was a little bit of difference in size for price, but also for looks, so like they don't all look the same. So that's the only concrete example I've seen used, but we'll look at not only here, but we'll see if, you know, this question comes up all over the place. So we'll try to do a little research on it, because I think you're not the only one city who's curious about that.
Evening, Arthur, how you doing?
Good.
Thanks for coming. So I just have a couple of the A through H, there's a couple that I'm not quite real concise on what they mean. Numbers, letter C is one of them. Promote adequate supplies of housing in types and densities appropriate to market demand and locations in the community, particularly downtown, et cetera, et cetera. Could you, could you maybe just clarify that a little bit or expand on that?
I'm gonna give Mike a chance first to see if he wants to say anything, because he helped pull these together. I have some thoughts, but I'll let the primary author first put his thoughts out there for you.
Well, as it notes there, I was trying to combine a couple of ideas or a couple of policies so we could refer back to those, policy six, seven, and eleven. I think, or am I reading that right?
I think it's just nine and thirteen for-
Nine and thirteen, thank you. But anyhow, the idea is to, for the, the city and its regulations to be flexible enough to allow the development community to respond with what they are, what people want to buy. And not to put too fine a point on it, allow density to occur where the demand is and not have it be constrained unnecessarily.
Okay, so I-
Right, and, and the first part is that policy, you need enough land for your projected growth. So the first is, you know, the very first part is promote adequate supply of housing. So that's your basic zoning to make sure you're meeting that requirement. And then the second part, I think, is what Mike was trying to explain, is have different types of housing, but also build the rules exactly how Mike was describing.
I guess when I read that, I, I, what goes through my mind is that's pretty much our zoning code lays out the zoning and the densities. And I think naturally those, but the market demand is set or the constraints are set by that zoning and then the market responds to that. Is this different than that, is this?
Go ahead.
Well, I think it, it gives you an opportunity, you know, in the form of policy to say that if, if you feel that the, that the city's rules are not allowing development to occur the way that the city wants to see it happen, then that gives you some grounds to look into.
Okay.
Should we make some changes?
Gotcha, so-
Let me give you a couple examples.
Let me, let me ask you this first, so process-wise, would that be something where we're, as a, as a city or staff, we're kind of, we're kind of checking in on regularly or maybe occasionally with the market somehow? And in other words, is there a kind of a process that can be implemented here?
There's a couple of different ways, so let me give a couple of examples. I'll give you three examples of how this provision might, this particular policy might play out when you start looking at strategies.
Don't know if we're back on, now we're on air. So we're reconvening the meeting, we have a little bit of, little bit of audiovisual difficulty, so thanks for bearing with us. I believe Roger, you were checking in-
I was in the middle of giving you some examples.
You were giving, you were giving us three examples.
Exactly, so I got the first one, right, eighty use.
What was it again, okay?
Eighty use. Second one is the idea of using like floor area ratio instead of density, because that way a builder can decide if he wants to do big units or small units depending on where the market is at. So that's like an exciting example, because you get a size of a building versus with density, you get so many units which can make people want to do bigger units, because they can only do so, the number set. And then a third example is like mini suites, which isn't necessarily a code issue, but can a person come in under your build, sorry, zoning code issue if you use FAR? But there may be other permitting or code, building code issues that might make it difficult for a builder who, if they wanted to build tiny efficiency studios and things along those lines, you know, with the parking and things like that, or just other building code issues. I know Redmond went through that with the first one they had. They had to like really work with the builder to sort of get through a few issues he was having in the building department. So those are examples of saying, if the mar, if a builder, the market thinks there could be enough demand out there and it shifts over time, that there's enough flexibility in your codes that lets them do that. So that's, I think, what the second thing is saying.
Yeah, thank you. The other one was, was letter F there, and I think I've asked this before and I'm just kind of making sure that I understand this. So special needs, we're, we're talking about senior housing or maybe assisted housing. Is there other, are there other kind of special needs out there?
Yes, there can be people with disabilities. That'd be another example. You do call out homeless, so that, we would not include that here, because you've got a separate one for homelessness. But for long, I think in the past, many cities had one for homeless. It may be, there may be other forms of types of group living where people are using some type of service or might be some kind of alcohol dependency kind of group living situation where they can get treatment. We've had Friends of Youth have done housing for young adults that are specialized for young adults and coming out of foster care, you know, when they first graduate from that. So there was a campus that was built in Kirkland where they've housed different types of needs of different profiles of young adults who need some assistance to help get on their feet. So those are some examples of special needs type housing.
So that might be something we can expand in terms of options or, or needs as we get feedback from the public or what else, okay? Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
Just a quick question, are we gonna run through the attachment A? Are we gonna mainly focus on the summary tonight?
I, I was planning on focusing on the summary.
Okay.
But if there's, the reason you ask is-
Few specifics in our- Few specifics in our goals and policies that I don't know that we currently meet and whether we should revise some of that language or, I mean, there's a few of them under policies like consider, which under a policy, that seems like it's pretty gray, like we would want to either go with it or not, that type of thing, not.
I would say that's not the focal point of the strategy. There are times where you will update the comprehensive plan. It might be helpful because we are going to be referring to the housing element a lot to put those out there for staff to note and put it on the side burner to see what the list looks like when it's at the end. And when they're considering, you know, because you, how often you do the comp plan updates, once a year? And whether or not some of them are considered cleanup or if they're considered more substantive, that should be done when you do a more regular update. So it's probably worth calling out, but I'm not sure that's, that is not the focus of what we're trying to do at this point.
Okay, in general, I think the summary is great, and I think it's something that we should almost have memorialized when we go through rezon requests, when we're going through individual housing options. It's nice to have the little condensed summary to kind of refocus what our goals were.
We have to be careful because when you're getting into a real zoning change, you do have a housing element and state law says you must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So you do need to boil, but you need to drill down to specific policies and stuff as you're considering specific rezones. We just thought this was sort of the handy dandy to get you, keep it at the high level enough for you. But be careful not to sort of rewrite your, you know, this would almost be rewriting your housing element to say, oh, let's rely on, on this chart in the future. You do have a housing element, which is what you should rely on as you get into more detail.
Correct. I'm just mentioning it as a summary tool. It's helpful. That's all.
Appreciate, Mike did a good job. I guess you're saying is summarizing your housing element.
And I think, yeah, if there's, if there's particular ones you want to refer back to later, I think, I think it might be worth taking a look.
Yeah, I think that as we're going along, if there are things like that, this is a good time to bring them up. So I'm not trying to hinder the idea of how come we said consider here, gee, shouldn't we work harder on this one and let's think about that? But there may be reasons why that word, trust me, every word was pretty carefully chosen when they were debating between consider and other words.
Okay, I'll just bring up one more point in regard to this. This is one that we brought up last week or last time we met. It was the strive to maintain no less than sixty percent owner occupied residences.
Right.
No one really had an idea where that number came from or if we should keep it. So that's kind of what led my questioning is whether we should amend anything in here.
Right, okay, and that's one you'll notice we didn't highlight here explicitly because of the conversation. We didn't feel like that was one of the things you felt was an overriding type issue to consider. But it is in the housing element at this point in time. Okay, any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, move to the next part. The next is to, oops, okay. Is, this is an attachment. This is attachment B. And this is right out of the comp plan, right? The housing element? Or is it in the, yes, this is in the, this is pretty much verbatim, right, out of the housing element. And it's just sort of a summary of the range of types of things the city has done. And again, I, we just wanted to remind you and put that back out there because you're not starting at square zero. I think we've talked to you about this before. And therefore, just sort of a quick reminder or one pager for you to remember some of the things that were at least highlighted a couple of years ago when we were updating the housing element of things that you've worked on. So the main one right at the top is the downtown revitalization plan. And it says, you know, plans include more than four hundred units in different areas and, or eleven hundred units in the pipeline. If you can see, you're further along and a lot of housing is happening downtown. But it also mentions West Bothell Landing and East Bothell, and East Bothell Landing as well. So the whole idea that you have done zoning changes since your first housing element to increase housing capacity in the city. Second one is related to the, the, I guess you could call it the R four type zoning. Uh, and that's sort of a, that was a new initiative. And, or no, I'm sorry, the first one is that you would have a net buildable. So that's sort of making sure your overall capacity is meeting the urban density requirement. The next one is related to you did create an R fifty four hundred zone, which is sort of a higher density profile. What I, Dave, can you describe the kinds of housing that's being built in those neighborhoods?
There's actually two R fifty four zone, uh, zones. There's the attached and detached. So detached is essentially small lot, uh, single family. The attached, uh, R fifty four hundred A was intended to promote town homes and, and other attached housing. But even in that zone, what we're seeing developed is mostly detached, detached condominium type developments where the property is owned in common, but, but the units are, are actually detached. And some of those now have been converting over to fee simple lots through the offspring lot provisions that we passed a couple of years back. But there is some, some town home attached housing being built. And I think, uh, we may be seeing more of that coming up.
And then the, the next one is an example of the REC or Residential Activity Center, which does exactly the example I was giving you. It uses something other than density to define building capacity of sites in, in these zones. And so, and you've had, um, you've had some development in that type of area. And actually, in the work we did, I guess it's last year now, that was something we looked at, right? And part of the, um, what was it? The, what's that area in the neighborhood called again? That we were working on last year?
Canyon Park?
Yeah.
Two years ago?
Canyon, but the reason that we worked on.
Oh, in Nike Hill, yes.
Nike Hill, right. So those, so those are two, these are all examples of variety of housing types, increasing types of housing. Next one is under the affordable, um, under the affordability is your regulations related to ADUs. And you've made some amendments over time to try to, um, increase that. And there still might be more work to be done in that area, but ADUs is one area. That we consider ADUs have been considered in the GMA world, helping to create affordability. Just because by definition, they tend to be at least affordable at eighty percent of median or less. And so they are just generally, even without explicit covenants, we count those towards cities affordability goals. And then basically your designation, your zoning designations for mobile home communities, manufactured housing communities, to sort of help and preserve that kind of housing, which is a, is a relatively affordable form of ownership housing. That's something you probably somewhat uniquely have done in your community. So that's, I think, a significant effort that you've taken on. In the area of special needs housing slash senior housing, your whole senior overlay. And that transformed the whole area around your senior center. And that was done since the first comprehensive plan was done. That didn't have explicit affordability there, but at least it has created those senior housing. Much of that was services in that area. In addition, the scene, the city did take a piece of land that they partially controlled, combined with some county land that is catty corner from the senior center and use that to leverage an affordable senior housing project that used other public subsidies to create rental housing for seniors. That is, that is affordable at, I think it's all at fifty percent of median and below, okay? So there, that was proactive, that was the city took the lead on trying to find that site and make it available.
And then. Arthur, can I ask you one quick question? Uh, on housing affordability, if we go back just one little bit.
Yes.
I was, um, do, do we, do you see any benefit, I mean, um, to tracking ADUs? Or are you just saying that, is, is there a benefit to the city trying to track that going forward or not?
So I think.
Or do you think it's okay the way we're handling it?
My answer is yes, but it's not only, it's not driven primarily, it's not primarily driven by the interest to know how many. It's driven by having a unique permit process then translates into a unique document that gets recorded against that home that makes it clear that something different was allowed on that home and it legalizes it. And that creates a documentation process that can have three impacts. One, neighbors, if they know about it and want, have issues, everyone can say, well, here are the rules and they got a permit for it. And if they're not following the rules, the homeowner needs to deal with it. Two, if the homeowner isn't following the rules, you have something to take away. You have a way to take away that unit legally. And then third, if we can ever get the banks to get their act together, sorry for any bankers who are out there, but if you're listening, please, please look at the fact that there's an illegal ADU in a unit, account for that in the financing. And the reason I get a little passionate about it, it's how I afforded my first home. I had a legal ADU and the bank let me borrow a little bit more because of the rental income from there. So most banks will not do that. They still don't after all these years. And so, but if they ever do, by having something that's legally recorded through that process, it would then also let the world know this is a legal unit. So yes, it helps you count them, but it has other reasons why I think it's an important thing to do.
So. So I do, I do believe we currently have, or is it that we do not have a current ADU policy? I mean, a permitting process for it, or I mean, are we?
We do now, since the, the amendments that we made.
Okay.
And.
I see, and that's the reason why, okay, we're, we're going to be starting to see more and more come in. That's why we.
We already are, and I'm, I've asked our, our, go ahead. I've asked our permit tech lead to run a report so that we can quantify those. I know in, in previous, um, sessions, we've talked about how we only had two up through twenty fourteen. That's no longer the case. So we'll, we'll have those numbers, uh, at our next session.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And then the last is regional coordination, and you've been a member of Arch for a number of years. And there are a lot of, a couple of ways that could participate in regional participation. One, we participate in a lot of regional planning efforts. And we report back to our executive board and the staff so we can help integrate and make sure cities voices are heard when regional issues are being considered. And then the whole funding program we do through the trust fund, where cities all join together to help fund projects. Like, for example, your project, I think four other cities or three other cities provided funding for that development. You provided the land, other cities provided some cash and vice versa. Over the years, cities help each other out, getting different developments done with affordable housing throughout East King County. So those, so that, the Arch part is both on the planning side as well as on the direct creating affordable units. So those are some, those are examples of things that we noted a couple of years ago in the update to the housing element. And there are other things too, I'm sure, but we want, you know, just to make, sort of refresh your memory, we're not starting at square zero here. And so what that can mean is that may mean some things like, oh, we've got some things that are working well. We don't need to do more. It could mean, oh, we're not doing, oh, we've got a strategy that's not on the list, so that's a new one for us. Or it might mean, oh, do we need to go back and look at some of these that we started to see how well they're working? You know, so I've heard a couple, a year or so ago, like the R fifty four hundred seemed to work so well. It all got used, right, at one point? So is it worth looking for more if that means it was pretty popular in the market? So is that something we should, the city look at some more of? Okay, so there's different ways of using this information or how that can help you build your strategy. Any other questions about these or other things you're wondering about going on in the community that were, that have been going on? Okay, all right, now the little bit harder part. What we've, what we're trying to, we're now on section four, identify gap areas. And what, and this is on the bottom of page two over to page three. And what we tried to do here is, remember your stickies? Where you posted, posted stuff up about what you liked or trends you saw and things like that? Well, we tried to on page two and three summarize, take all your comments and take your comments and try to organize them a little bit. And to what might be ways of talking about things that you see in the community that might want to pay particular attention to as you're thinking about strategies. And so what we've done here is in the memo, we're going to go through each of these points that are in here. And then we're going to just quickly refresh your memory on data that seemed to support the statements that you were making. To see whether or not, what we're hoping to see is, is this list on page two and three, you like it? There are elements you don't like, you don't think reflect, but you think are issues in the community? Or it's missing something, okay, that we, that didn't get picked up in the conversations mostly at the last meeting? So that's its purpose here. And then the hope is now you'll have a one pager on gap areas, okay, to sort of help keep your mind fresh as we go forward. So the first couple we have are related to types of households that may have housed, in terms of identifying housing needs from types of households. So the first bullet was, says on the bottom of page two, generally provide for lower income up to forty five thousand and moderate income up to seventy five thousand households, and in particular, young workers, single parents and students. Okay, and all I'm doing here, and you'll see on the top of the page, I have bullets here that reflect the data that we thought reinforced this point. And this point came from the matrix you did where you guys all stood up and we had income levels and types of households, and you all put your ones and twos and threes or whatever. This statement was sort of our attempt to condense that matrix, okay? And so here's just a few slides that we think help reinforce that, this statement here. One is data on cost burden, and they were focused more on low and moderate income are the households who are more cost rent, especially renters who are cost burden. And the fact that we told you from the data that, that the seniors and younger are often the ones, the renters who are more cost burden. The second slide is about showing you that relative to needs, countywide needs of twelve percent at very low and twelve at thirty to fifty versus what's available, that the bigger gaps were at the lower end of the income spectrum and, and Bothell and, and housing in general and equal, and equally so in Bothell. Third, that, this was the chart that we showed you that showed that average rents have gone from being in the, most of my career, affordable to people who are earning somewhere between sixty and seventy and maybe seventy five percent of median in some hot market periods, to average rents now being on the east side of the hole, um, above eighty percent of median. And for the Kenmore Bothell area, almost to eighty percent of median, where in that area, it was more closer to sixty percent in the past. So that trend that we've seen the last few years, which maybe it will correct itself, you know, we don't know. You can see there's dips in other periods of time, but we've never seen it quite spike as high as it is relative to affordability to median income. Another one is showing annual wages and that you do have fifty percent of jobs in the community pay less than fifty thousand dollars a year, which is not all that uncommon or dissimilar to the rest of the county. But you, just like with the rest of the county, do have a lot of lower paying jobs. Again, all of these are from the presentation we did, um, a meeting or so ago. The fact that, um, you have a mixed, your, your, your number of one and two person households is a relatively, you know, is above twenty percent for each, yet your supply of one and two bedroom units is a lower percentage. So is there to some degree a mismatch of one and two bedroom, you know, that maybe you could do more smaller units and there could still be demand for those? Again, the market will let you know that to some degree. But the fact that we're seeing a lot of builders build a lot of small units, people go, God, how can they build so many small units? Well, maybe what they're doing is they're balancing out that, that, I don't know if that's a pyramid or what you call that. But maybe they're seeing it that, if that's what helps keeps costs down for people, then maybe that's why that's being still so successful to have so many small units in new buildings. Then the other is, nope, that's, so that's the first bullet, okay? So that's some of the data that we thought, um, was relevant to that basics bullet there. Why don't I run through these and then let's go back and revisit them? The second one is you talked a lot about homeless, and I'm not quite sure how it plays out, but you noted it and really, you hand wrote it into that chart because we didn't have it on the list of types of households. Several of you put your, your numbers by that. So we think that we wanted to call out that you've identified homelessness as some type of issue for you to be thinking about. And what we have here is just showing you where homeless households previous, I think their last residence was. And then also some data about the North Shore School District. And on the one night count, how many people were from the east side, which includes this area as well. The third bullet that we have is entry level, young couples, moderate income homeownership, okay? And the data piece that maybe helped shows that is similar to the rental one, but showing how home prices have been relative to what's affordable to median income. but showing how home prices have been relative to what's affordable to median income have been escalating and we're not seeing condominiums built now. So the one, the product that is a little more affordable, we're not seeing as much built and, and stuff like that. So, that, this is maybe some data that supports your comments about ownership, especially for entry level or for entering our young households. And then the next bullet is, there was a comment about increasing housing diversity or household diversity and what is the relevance there? One area that we could think of was in the area of, does, especially for, if there's lower income, being able to convey information about what's available into the community, being aware of. Another would be, is there a response from the development community? Again, can the market respond to the, to the demand from the market? I used to do development and in the late eighties, everybody in California, when they were building ownership housing, had to deal with Asian population culture and design homes that would be attractive to them because they were too big a part of the market. So you had to start thinking about how you designed homes and it was more design, not size, but again, it just sort of illustrates the point that we are seeing increasing diversity. And so we just sort of gave you some language about how language is an issue potentially related to the increasing diversity. Not quite sure where that one goes in the conversation, but you did note it and we wanted to put it out there that that might be something as we go along to think about and keep in mind. The finally, another statement was, why does the city have such a low proportion of workers who live in the city and work in the city? And here is the data that sort of supports that comment about seventy seven percent of Bothell's workers live outside Bothell and eighty five percent of the workforce commutes into Bothell. And is there something about why does that happen kind of thing? So when we're doing the focus groups with the business community in particular, we'll make sure we're asking that question. Is there a reason why that's happening or you think it's happening? And is it a concern or not? Maybe it's not a concern, okay? But we will make sure we probe that when we're talking with the business community. So that's related to people and the people who might live in the housing. So, maybe we should stop there. We will also have a section on types of housing, but this was the ones that we sort of had as takeaways in terms of thinking about groups, housing meeting the needs of different people in the community.
I've got a couple of questions as I, I don't know if the other commissioners too, too, with regards to, I know we kind of went through the, we kind of powered through those slides pretty fast, which is good. I was wondering if you could, you could backtrack to the front of them.
Sure.
We can just kind of go through and let the commissioners get an idea if they want to comment on, because.
Okay.
For instance, this wouldn't be in our packet, so it'd be the first time, you know, we're seeing outside of the packet, but which is.
Right. They were in your last packet, they're all slides from there, but yes, I'm happy to.
Sorry, this week, sorry.
Right. So, and the data was just mostly to go, you made statements. We went and see, thought if the data supported your statements and I think what we're saying is, your statements all, there's data to sort of back them up. And so I think as much as anything, we're more interested in the statements and if the statements ring true. Not as much about the data, if you have questions about the data, that's fine, but I think what we're really trying to do is hone in and see if we're summarizing needs from a, from a population point of view for us to be thinking about as we work on strategies.
Okay.
Arthur, what is the percentage that's at the top of each bar? What does that represent?
It's saying what percentage of people, renters under thirty percent of median are cost burden? So eighty six percent of all households who are under thirty percent of median in Bothell are at least cost burden. And now what this is telling you, we've broken that out, the dark is saying severely cost burden and the light is cost burden. So if you're dark, it means you're, if it's a dark color, that means six hundred of the six hundred and seventy households who are cost burden in Bothell, not only they cost burden renters, but they're paying over fifty percent of their income to live.
So the eighty six percent corresponds to the six hundred and seventy.
It corresponds, no, that corresponds of all renter households under thirty percent. So that means fourteen percent of households under thirty percent are not cost burden, they're paying less than thirty percent.
Okay, so.
But.
So you answered my question, so then maybe what, what does the six hundred and seventy represent then?
Yeah, well, Mike, you're gonna, you want to jump in, go.
Arthur was totally right, but another way to think of it is the, the other fourteen percent in that column are, isn't shown. So that's on, the other, the fourteen percent who are not cost burdened are on top of the six hundred and seventy.
Okay, so six hundred and seventy represents eighty six percent.
Correct.
Okay, that's.
There you go, another way of putting it, a better way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For our thirty percent average median, median income that we're looking at, just because I haven't spent a whole lot of time thinking about issues like of subsidized housing and section eight. For the severely cost burden, are those people who are severely cost burden with assistance or without, or without assistance?
So with, it would be what they are paying towards their housing.
Right.
So if they have assistance.
Do we know?
They should be included in that base because it's the census and the census doesn't say, oh, you're assisted living, so you get counted differently? So they would ask someone in assisted housing, are you paying more than, of your income, are you paying more than fifty percent of your income?
Right.
Or that, what they really do is they ask, how much is your income? And then they ask, how much are you paying? And then they do the math.
Okay, so how much is your income, how much are you paying not, how?
Right.
Is it how much you are paying or how much is your rent?
No, how much, it's how much you are paying.
So how much you are paying?
Right.
Okay, so they could be subsidized and even with that subsidy, they're still severely cost burdened.
They may or they may not be, it might be part of your fourteen percent. They shouldn't be hopefully.
If they are subsidized.
Right, the odds, they still may be in the thirty percent, they could be two very different kinds of assisted housing.
So the sixteen percent might be, that might be where our subsidized housing is falling?
Yes, but, but this, I'm gonna, since you're showing such good questions, there's two very different kinds of assisted housing.
Okay, thank you.
There is one group, which is what we mostly do now, where we help a group set their rent based on fifty percent of median or thirty percent of median. And so that translates to six hundred and fifty dollars a month. They're going to charge six hundred and fifty dollars a month no matter who lives there. And if you move in and you're lower income and your income goes down, they can't lower the rent for you. That's what we mostly do nowadays. The federally assisted, I'll usually refer to it as federally assisted housing and what we used to do more of and is what the section eight program does is, you pay one third of your income. You pay thirty percent of your income for housing and if your rent is higher, the government comes in and pays the gap. So if your income goes up and down, you keep paying thirty percent and then the government fills the gap, okay? So, two very, very different, and so when I usually am saying federally assisted or HUD assisted, that's the latter type. And when we're doing, most of the newer stuff we do like Riverside Landing is the former.
Okay, so as we look at this, should we just assume that any subsidies?
Are accounted for.
Are the, are.
Could be, I mean.
Not the severely cost burden.
Right. But, but because of the first group, somebody who's very low income might be living in a subsidized unit, but they're still paying a lot of their income because their income is so low, but it's a lot better than them being out in the open market.
Right.
So.
Okay.
So it could be.
And, and the reason why I was asking for clarification for that is that when you get up higher towards the median income,
Right.
Those, those folks are struggling as well.
They, right. Now, now, and, and the thing that we haven't done in the graphs this go around, which I used to do originally, is to give context to a full community, because a lot in our community are in the eighty and above, is we used to put in a bar that said, what percentage of households are paying less than twenty percent? Because, oh, thirty percent, that's standard, whatever. And we say, well, when you look at the world, you get at eighty percent and above and especially above median income, the, the bars flip. And once you're above median income, most people pay under twenty percent of their income for housing. Okay, so, to, and we do that to sort of help think harder about saying thirty percent and being low income and you're paying more than that. Because most of us don't pay thirty percent, okay? Especially once we're at median income. We pay a lot less. Okay?
Thank you.
So the first two bars are, Arthur, you, I guess intuitively, you would go from a higher burden and as you go up the scale of pay, you would go down to a lower burden and, and so, between the thirty and the thirty to fifty, you're, you're kind of, you're flipped. So I would, I would anticipate ninety would be at the under thirty and then eighty.
You're right, but then, but look at the severely cost burden and that is marrying exactly what you're saying. The people who are paying more than fifty percent, it is a lot higher for those under thirty percent of median. Follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, absolutely.
Right, so that, that one is following, you're right, you would think, but it is at least what you described is playing itself out for severely cost.
So the, so the cost burden folks in the under thirty are actually a higher number.
Yeah.
Than they are at, at the thirty to fifty, is that, is that significant, is there?
No, I, I, I think, I think, I often tell people at particular.
Funding sources, is it due to programs? Or is it just?
I think you could analyze that a lot and come up with some reasons and someone could come up with other reasons.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask.
So, quick question, later you have a chart with Snohomish County and you list by two thousand and fourteen, the cost burden renters, forty nine percent. So if we took this graph, we could interpret that forty nine percent, if we're looking just globally, of renters in Bothell are cost burdened. And that's.
Correct.
Kind of our big.
Yes.
Gap area that we're.
Yes, and that's why, and we're saying, when you look at that, realize there's a problem sometimes with using averages, because averages don't tell a full story. This tells a more complete story, but yes, if you add them all together, it would be forty nine percent.
This is, it's more of a comment than, than a question and maybe it's just something we'll get to down the road. I mean, we have this data and I guess it's, what, what do we do with it? Because we know this is pretty significant.
So, and that.
Or is this to more justify our affordable housing component that?
This is to hopefully justify these statements here and to see if you can go, yep, I'm comfortable with these points and I don't have to keep reexploring data all the time. We always have the data there for you if you want to go back and revisit, that's why I said the focus tonight is we're trying to help you really concise and boil down a few things to help you as you start struggling with thinking about strategies and why you should care or which ones would they deal with? And so it's really these bullet points that we're trying to get tonight to see if you feel comfortable with. And we put in the data to see if that helps you get more comfortable with them.
One other thing, Arthur, that this graph I think points out, you made mention a couple of weeks ago that as you get higher in income, you buy down too, so you have more opportunity at eighty to a hundred percent to find something cheaper and get yourself out of a.
Yes.
Severe situation versus.
So if you, let me go ba, nope, down a slide or two. To that point, if you look at where rents used to be on average, they were affordable at seventy percent of median. So, people at eighty percent or ninety or a hundred percent, if they're still renters, they could go out there and get rental units at where it's less than thirty percent and they can start. And what do they do if they do that? Who's going to do that? Who's doing that? I did it once in my lifetime, what point in your lifetime do you think about doing that? What are you trying to do more times than not? Young households trying to save up for a down payment. So if you can, you'll, you'll live with cheap, right, you're going to do what you can so you can save up that ten thousand dollars, you can go and buy a home. And so, if you were in the sixty to eighty percent income range, you could maybe do that and you could decide, you could get one of the, you know, it's an average, so there's units more and units less. If you have the ones that are less and someone goes, I'm going to live in a little bit of a rundown place or whatever, a smaller place with my wife right now because we want to save up money like crazy so we can go out and buy a house. When your average rents start getting way up there, it gets harder to do that, okay? So, that's just, right, a lot of people I know write about when they first get married or whatever, they sometimes underhouse themselves so that they pay less than thirty percent and they can save up some money. So, any other, I'm not, questions about that or more importantly, the bullet points? Do these seem to ring? Hopefully you'll say, hey, these are, some of these are my worries, that's what I'm hoping you'll say. And say now that you had a chance to read them from somebody else writing them, how do you feel about them?
Can I ask one other question about these slides before we move on? Can you bring up the slide where you had home sales of two thousand and twelve versus two thousand and sixteen? I think the median price.
This one?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, we all know that it's gone up, but I think that was the most shocking new slide that we've seen, just the difference in four years.
Yes.
We're, we're trying to tackle affordability from many different avenues, rentals and ownership and that's a, that's a high hurdle on the ownership end to kind of.
And, and the thing, the other half of the story, which we've touched upon, or maybe another part of the story is the white line as well, because you would think, given that and that condo, maybe this is why, isn't why we haven't seen as much condos. Part of, why are the condos staying relatively flat? Why aren't they taking off more? A little bit is the banking industry is still being a little tough on getting loans for condos. I think one can expect, we are seeing, right, aren't we seeing, Mike, that our units, all of a sudden, they're selling much faster? Our restricted units? So we are starting to see, it feels like the condo market is coming back, but we're still not seeing builders build them that often. And, and that's something that's out there and I think we mentioned, is it because of rules or is it because of market? You know, and some builders are saying it's rules that prevent us from building condos. So, when you look at this, you know, and this one reason we do the two bars is there is two parts. Condos is another critical part of the ownership market and the overall housing market in the community. And so, there is still some hope there, but I think you're going to see that white line start moving. In fact, I bet you it has started to move in the last year.
To your point that you observed there, somewhere embedded down in, in this text that we've been going through, I saw a stat that, I, I think it was for East King County, I don't know that it was for Bothell specifically, that twenty five percent of the wage earners are above average for all of King County? And the rest of the wage earners are at or below what the going wages are for all of King County, do you know what I'm ta, talking about?
Well, it's. Where did that go? Oh, wait a minute, I'm going. What's happening here? It's sort of, it's the income distribution of your salaries and, and you can see it's your high end, you do have a little bit higher bar for the seventy five or more, but you do still have a lot of jobs in those lower ranges as well. So I, I don't, I think that sort of is.
So that's kind of not matching what I, the visual is not matching.
It, it's not being said exactly how you put it and, but I think what we're talking about is what is the actual income distribution of workers in your community? And how do they compare to countywide? And so the numbers you were sort of saying is sort of like an overall and this is sort of looking at how many are in different income, different income levels. So it's a similar point, you are saying something a little bit different, but I'm saying is, and we can go back and try to find.
It's almost like, I need to pull out those numbers at some point and say, so which are the, which, which are the numbers that we're working off of? Is it, is it this data or the data that I found in here?
They could both be right.
Okay.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay.
Because in that seventy five thousand or more, they could be skewed towards the higher end, okay? And therefore, you could have twenty five percent of the workers who are making more than a certain amount, okay? What, from a housing demand point of view, I just want to know what people's incomes are. That's what matters, it's how much they have. So what you have to always keep in mind is, when you're doing a distribution, when you start grouping from there out, you don't know where they're within that range. And so, you have a relatively, you see thirty percent are earning more than seventy five thousand in your community.
So seventy five thousand or more is incurred, is, is on up to what an anesthesiologist would be making? This is not the me, the median, the bottom half.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
I, it, it just seems that, you know, I think addresses, is the no brainer, is that if we're trying to keep people local having housing that's just going off the roof with wages that aren't matching, it is, how do you make those two?
And.
How do you make those two meshes?
Right, we want to ask your business community this, but we just went through some focus groups in Issaquah and it was interesting. it was interesting, forty to sixty thousand. That's the salary range that they're saying are the people that they, they have a hard time finding the housing, and that's starting to be more than just, you know, a part-time worker, their sort of entry-level career, and that's, they were saying, that's the window they're missing. Okay? Which is real interesting because the company I worked for that was formed, was formed by the business community, and it was sort of that same range back in the years when we were, that, with the business community, the big corporations were saying too, we need housing in that range in our communities. And we'll see if they say the same thing here, I mean, we'll, we're not gonna assume what they're saying in Issaquah is the same for you, but I'm just letting you know that, sort of that forty to sixty is where they're saying they are particularly challenged with trying to have, you know, recruiting and being able to keep or things along those lines. So we'll, we'll ask locally what the businesses feel that way, and see if they have particular gap areas that they're seeing. Okay, so I'm gonna keep going back to the same question, the bullets, how do you feel about the bullets? And the statements there, and have we? Do you feel like it's a good summary, it's missing something? And again, this is from the household point of view, we're gonna jump next to the types of housing, this is just to sort of talk about it from the who.
And, and by bullets, you mean the A through eighteen policies?
The, the, the one, yeah, under A, under four A, the, the dark bullets, homeless, moderate income homeownership, you know, those, those at that level.
I, I have a question, Arthur, and I thought about this while we were gone last week, or between our last meeting and this meeting. And we discussed a lot of housing needs, including demographics that we feel need housing, we talked about students, we talked about single parents. We, we really don't have any control over who gets what housing.
Right.
We can only control what level of affordability is available and maybe have some incentives to help people like seniors or students.
That will be true at times, but there'll still be some strategies where it drills down a little bit more. In other words, hmm, this kind of housing would naturally probably help this, some of these populations more than others. Or if alls we're doing is rental housing and we forget about things that might translate to ownership, right? Then maybe we're not covering these bases. So you're right, um, there will be strategies where we'll put dots by all population groups, because you don't know for sure what's gonna happen. But you may even, but you could do things like saying, we want in our funding, we want to see some senior housing, which we do currently. We want to see some special needs housing, which we do, okay? We want to see homeless housing, we do that, we have called out so that we don't get all the same thing with the housing trust fund. Um, you may start saying things like, we'd like to see some larger units. Um, we'd like to see preservation be something you use your funds for. Call out, go, guess what, almost all these things we do now anyway. But you may want to reinforce, say, hey, that's important that, you know, with funding, we call out particular needs to encourage. So we just did a project that is going to councils right now in Bellevue, and it's in a nice neighborhood. And the developer had a couple three bedrooms, and our advisory board said, a couple? This is the one time where it's in more of a single-family neighborhood, why can't you get more three bedrooms? You got a little open space here, and they came back a year later, and now they have, instead of only two three bedrooms, they now have ten. Okay? So we got some family units out of that. So it, it's couldn't be, you know, so you're right, to some degree, and that's why we say let the market be flexible, but there are some strategies when we look at them, will naturally maybe help deal with some of these population areas you're talking about.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not getting a rousing, yeah, this does it. And I know, this is, this is, this is sort of the conversation that we're trying to get you to points where you're starting to go, yeah, this helps me a lot think about what I'm, who I'm, who we're trying to help, or what we're trying to do.
I just appreciate that you're acknowledging, um, a, a mission, a focus, a purpose of the, the different needs.
Right.
But, but not trying to pigeonhole everything so that we have some flexibility, because I was bothered about that last time was, well, we should have a little flexibility and not try to pigeonhole everything, so it sounds like there's a good balance going on.
I, I, I think that for types of households, this does a good job of, of representing what we had in the, in the chart last week, and kind of putting it in bullet fashion, so I, you know, I feel comfortable moving on to, uh, types of households, I guess, or sorry, types of housing.
Okay.
That sounds good, yeah, let's move on to the next.
And, we're gonna let you, oh, we're gonna let you in on a little secret too. We thought you did a good job too. We looked at all the data, and we were like, oh, they didn't, we, we were trying to figure out if we thought you missed anything. And we didn't feel like we had to call anything out that you didn't call up, so, um, we sort of feel you did a pretty good job from the data point of view. So now let's shift over to housing. So, the first bullet is about implications of transportation costs and abilities to reduce transportation costs such as through pedestrian and transit. And, let's see, let me go. And to some degree, that previous slide gets at that. But what we did here, and also for the, this one pertains potentially, um, maintaining opportunities for ownership housing for a variety of income levels, help maintain a balance of rental and ownership housing. So going back to an earlier comment, you notice we just said balance, we didn't put the percentage in there, because of the conversation last time, but we wanted to acknowledge that there's both needs out there without putting hard numbers behind them. And I thought that this slide, your capacity points out the potential challenges and opportunities of these two bullets. The opportunity is, wow, your multifamily mixed use are probably areas where pedestrian and transit service are going to be relatively good. So a lot of your capacity is potentially in areas that would meet that objective. The challenge part is, but you don't have a lot, relatively speaking, of single-family in particular and multifamily. And where you might have traditionally more typically seen ownership. So that might put the challenge on you as you're looking at strategies, is how do we keep creating ownership opportunities, or can, what can we do in order with what we have available to us and still keep those balances going on? Okay, because, so this sort of gets where, oh, if condos aren't working, ow, how do you get a good, you know, condos might be important if you want balance, because it appears that much of your capacity is gonna be in more attached forms of housing. So if you want to keep that balance, then thinking about that and hoping that the market can get to a point where some of what you're seeing built in your mixed use is also ownership. So we thought this one slide helped address both of these points.
So could you clarify then, Arthur, is this, is this city of Bothell, is this?
Yes, this is city of Bothell.
It is, the King County portion of city of Bothell?
No, this should be all of Bothell.
All of Bothell, okay.
Yes. And it is two thousand twelve, so it's not a hundred percent up to date, so.
Right.
But it's in ballparks, it's giving you a sense of the general balance.
Can I ask another question, I mean, this, seems like great information, um, was this something that's, I mean, Dave, do you just wave a wand and tell it what you want and it just spits this out, or is this a grind to try to get all this data pulled together? Or did you do this?
No, th- this was, this was arch, uh, so.
Well, this particular data we get from the city staff, and they had to do it as part of buildable lands and stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, this is what your staff does during the day that takes chunks of time to get ready for these meetings.
My, my curiosity's peaked as, as in relation to where we're at in two thousand sixteen with this.
Right, and we have, in, in the needs analysis, there is a slide, we have data that shows this for all of our cities in East King County, you're not alone. This is a very typical capacity balance for cities in East King County, very common.
And, and this doesn't, so this wouldn't reflect the, um, all the capacity that we added in Canyon Park.
Right.
And Country Village, uh, so the, the, uh, percentage of capacity in multifamily is even greater than, than they shown here.
You're not typically taking multifamily and turning it into single family.
Right.
Okay.
Is, is there a way we can get an update on this? I don't know if it's worth it, but, um, it would be nice to see, just, just with the growth we've had downtown and maybe other cities as well, um, has it made a dent in that, has it kind of flipped the balance a little bit on that? And I know, Dave, that you're, for the most part, just sitting around during the day.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just kidding.
Well, I think we can't, I mean, we, I believe we can, uh, update this as, as we work through this process, uh, uh, to some extent, but, um.
I, I would sort of put it out there is approximate stuff, like what might be helpful is the R forty-five hundred, like, is there any, you know, it may help for certain zones in particular to kind of know, um, kind of thing, but I'm not sure for doing a strategy, it might tell you, in other words, for the work we're doing now, um, you may want a little more data, because you might want to say, yeah, let's see, we should, we're not gonna decide now as part of this process that there will be more forty-five hundred, but is that the right term, forty-five hundred?
Eight, uh, fifty-four hundred.
Fifty-four hundred, sorry, I knew, I do that a lot, um, and, um, that, but you'd say, wow, it was popular, there is very little of it left, we should, one of the things the city should look at as one of its priorities is seeing if there is other areas that could be made that kind of zoning. And you're not, and, and so you would want at least have some rough of, are we running out of it kind of thing?
Yeah, I guess for me, I'm a, I'm a very visual guy, and so to see just maybe what's happened downtown and maybe some other areas.
Okay.
What, what, when you look at it on a chart and you see the change on a chart, what that looks like on the ground, right, so there's some correlation to.
Okay.
Wow, there's been some stuff going on downtown, and oh, look, we got a little bit of, a little bit of brown on that one column, you know, this kind of see. That, that was my curiosity, not that.
Is it sort of what's happened the last four years?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so, or five or whatever, you know.
It's Roger, were you, were you saying maybe that to even break that down, uh, per zoning, possibly?
Not at all.
I think I was suggesting that for some zones, it might be helpful, like the fifty-four hundred.
I mean, when I think of, when I look at that, I think multifamily mixed use, I think six-ohs, right? Even though those are apartments, but that's still part of this whole conversation, and so, it's like, okay, four hundred some units, okay, wow, we got a little movement in the bar, you know, what, so what's the sensitivity to our numbers based on what's going on on the ground?
Yeah, because obviously you have some mixed use now.
And I, I think that's more just an editorial comment, Dave, I, I don't want anybody to go diving in and spend a time on it, but if there's any thoughts on it.
Okay, we'll, we'll see if we can do a cursory, quick thing that help address that a little bit, and I think I understand what you're looking for, yeah.
Just a quick question on a ra- a possible rabbit trail we could go down on discussing how, on, on discussing how we would create more affordable housing, so we look at single-family homes and we look at that it's pretty much built out.
Mm-hmm.
So my, one of the discussions we have is preserving our existing homes and creating more ADUs. I mean, is that, is that the kind of thing you're thinking we ought to, okay, all right, okay, thanks.
Yep. I can tell we're getting close to, you're almost getting ready for doing strategies, we're getting there.
Ju- just a que- I might have missed it on the intro, but how exactly are these numbers related to transportation costs and development?
I mean. Say another sentence about what you mean by transportation costs, oh, oh.
Says transportation costs.
Oh, because how can you reduce your transportation cost by being able to use transit and walk places?
Right, so you're just assuming that all the multifamily.
In general, you've got a lot of capacity in areas that are naturally inclined to be able to create that formula of reducing your overall housing and transportation cost.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure that's what you meant.
Yes. Okay? There's a couple more. Um, so the next one was about senior housing, that you have a relatively healthy amount of dedicated senior housing, but there still may be needs of forms of housing that could serve seniors, and you'll see the examples we gave were, um, about the kind of stay-in-the-home statement I heard earlier, that you have the go-to places, and so one data point we have is, shows that in terms of housing that is licensed as assisted living, nursing, or adult family homes, you have the most per thousand senior residents or, um, of any community, and probably would want to do that for overall population too. Um, and I think you'll find for overall population, you're still relatively high, um, compared to other cities, so I think it would be helpful to see that from both. It doesn't mean you may not need some more, but the point is, your overlay zone and adult family homes that are happening in your town naturally is showing you, you've got a relatively good supply. Um, and in fact, you may be helping some communities nearby that have less, I mean, people, you know, you're still near, you know, if I was in Kenmore, I'd say, great, that's close enough, I can make it here, and that's sort of where regionalism comes in, and, um, in general, is that especially when you get into more specialized forms of housing, it's not, oh, the Bothell senior boundary, it's ten miles. You know, you sort of have radiuses that you, when you do senior housing, that you look at for your market, okay? Um, the other slide, and I'm not quite there to that yet, was also talking about accessory dwelling units, because accessory dwelling units can be a way to allow a senior to stay in their home, right? Um, that's my story, I rented an ADU for a number of years because I was taking care of the woman upstairs, I was there for the emergency, if it was ever to happen, um, kind of thing, so, uh, it allows, can help seniors stay in their home economically, as well as take care of the yard and things like that, um, kind of thing, so. What happened here? I don't know, okay, so here's your ADU, and on the ADU front, again, because your system, this isn't saying this is exactly how many you have, this is how many you knew you had a few years ago. Uh, we will update that, but even if you have a few, you're still gonna have a relatively low amount of ADUs that have been officially permitted through the city. And so there may be lots of opportunity to try to find out why you're not getting more and are there ways you could get more. Okay? Um, the next is, and, oh, we didn't do this, I'm sorry, we didn't have, um, sorry, we meant to get you.
Hey, Arthur, could, could you go back to that slide?
Yes, I, I'm meaning to, okay. We meant to have, I'm sorry, I forgot to get, is your amount of manufactured housing. And so you have preserving manufactured housing, which provides a relatively affordable form of ownership, and your data will look the same on manufactured housing as it does for senior assisted housing, okay? You will be at the top, okay, we, and we have the data somewhere in our reports, we just didn't get a graphic done for you, so I forgot to put that back in. And then finally, accessory dwelling units is this slide here, so, so those are our points that we pulled up from, again, your notes from the last time. These are the sort of specialized forms of housing to maybe keep front of mind as you're looking at strategies.
Arthur, can you, is there anything that you know of, um, in the Bozarts, the Mercer Island or the Newcastle communities that are driving the number of ADUs up so high?
Um, I'm sorry. Um, we studied Mercer Island like crazy, like ten years ago, because they got flying right out of the gate. And one of our thoughts is awareness. And the city making the system pretty straightforward and simple. Um, and Mercer Island seems to have a very insular building community, small, know the system, and they all kind of like did it, and then when they were doing their ADU ordinance, they have their own newspaper, and it was all over the place. So, um, not necessarily in a bad way, it was just all over the place. So the level of awareness of ADUs in Mercer Island is just off the charts. And I don't know if that's half the, and then the way the building community works. So a lot of their ADUs, some of their ADUs are built into these big new homes that are being built. People are like, hey, I'll build an ADU in, and some people complain, well, some of those ADUs aren't even being used right now, okay? Uh, I have a friend who lived on Mercer Island, he built one into a house he remodeled for his mother. And her mother wasn't living there, but he thought within two or three years she was gonna be living there. And the one I owned was built by the owner for his son coming back from the war. Now, that was thirty years earlier, okay? Often they start helping deal with the family, but once they're there, they morph into other things, and so for me, it was a rental unit. Um, but for, it was built because there was a circumstance going on. So I don't know if in Mercer Island, it's just the builders did it and people liked it, and so they got to know it and they bring it up, I, I don't know, and that's one of the things we want to get all the, you know, if the cities are interested, we think it's more than just the permitting rules. And that's one of the things we want to get all the, you know, if the cities are interested, we think it's more than just the permitting rules, okay?
I, I think it might, you know, I've, I've seen some stuff in the, like, the Westa Market neighborhood in Kirkland there. Where you've got just incredibly valuable homes going up and, and.
Right.
I've seen a lot of that, it's more of a style really almost, because you've got driveways and plazas and stuff that.
Right.
That go under some, you know, bridge or something, and so maybe that's part of it as well.
So what's interesting is, we helped do a workshop for planners around the state a long time ago. And one of the sessions we did, it was, it was a learning experience for me, is I had a planner who worked with us. Go to the architecture library and make copies of fifties and sixties style homes, like thirty of them. And just make copies and we made overheads, I mean, like, we use overheads all the time? And we brought in an architect who's ju- who specialized, one of his specialties was designing accessory dwelling units for people. And what we did is we had two sessions during the day, and in each session, we just pulled out ten of the overheads. Put them on the overhead and he in one minute showed you where you could put an ADU in that unit. Daylight basements, oh my gosh, they're the easiest things in the world, so. There are really a lot of ways to accommodate, he showed how you could do it in ranch style homes, I mean. I was amazed watching him how easily, without, with minor plumbing changes. So, yes, there are certain homes that might, and alleyway homes you think are a natural kind of way. The reason you see those in Kirkland potentially is Kirkland uses FAR in single family neighborhoods. And they exempted ADUs from the FAR. And so people were economically motivated to put ADUs in Kirkland as well. So it's a little more complicated, the stories sometimes have, you know, the rest of the story part of it. But you are right that detached kind of above garages with alleys can accommodate them easier. But trust me, there's lots of forms of housing that accommodate ADUs very easily. Um, and Mercer Island doesn't have any alleys, we know that, um, so they're not making, they're all hillsides just like you. Um, they have the same kind of topography and street system you have, I think, so. Anyway, so back to the bullet points or other questions on the data, um, same question is for the section A. Is there anything that feels missing or something that doesn't belong here?
Are you just referring types of housing?
Yes, yeah, this is for the types of housing section, so those, one, two, three, four, five, we sort of called out five things that you guys noted. So it's the implications on tra- you know, trying to, the ability to reduce transportation costs. Uh, maintaining opportunities for ownership for a variety of income levels, you know, those, that level.
Well, we're, oh, real quick, um, that, that was, Commissioner Cecil, I, that was a good catch there. Um, that I didn't catch the first time with regards to ADUs for one thousand, and I guess it's more of just, I guess, a comment and. Maybe we can pick it up later, but I think that, that the ADUs might be a particularly good focused topic if the commissioners. It seems, it seems that we've talked about this and people like to talk about it, is to. Talk about a strategy at one of the future, uh, housing meetings, uh, to kind of, kind of put. ADUs, you know, kind of set aside ADUs and actually make it as a top, we talk about with regards to this. And then it was interesting, I, I noticed one thing you said with regards to, uh, I guess it was Mercer Island and. Uh, s- a small community of builders and then a newspaper is that, I think, once in a while in this day and age when people are kind of just bombarded by all types of, uh. Uh, emails of all, we all still get, uh, some of us still get a, a paper, you know, from the Bothell, we get the Bothell reporter. And or the quarterly magazine from the city, that mi- this might be a, a particular topic, we may want to kind of plug in there if, if we think that. We think it would be a good topic for, because I, I'm excited about the, uh, the possibility of ADUs, I think they're, they would fit into Bothell very well, I think they're a good opportunity.
And, you know, and, um, a couple of comment, you know, along those lines, like I say, other cities bring it up, well, what's the reporter doing right now on another housing topic? They're covering homelessness, and it's going in all the reporters, the same articles show up in all the reporters, so this could be a topic area that. Is maybe enough universal appeal that it's worth it to the reporter, not just for your community, but for others as well. The other thing I would say, like, one thing Mercer Island did is they opened it up for all those existing ones that never got permits, and they gave them a due date. So if I showed you the annual permits, and you could see one month where their permit applications went up to like forty. Which was the month before the, that sunset provision for existing ones coming in and the city saying, don't worry, it's okay with us, kind of thing, so. And not, several cities have done that, Kirkland, you'll see the same thing, they had the same provision, and you can tell the month before that deadline hit. Um, kind of thing, so that might be example for all cities got together and they all said, yeah, we should do that for a year. Reporter might get out there and let all the cities know, you know, hey, all the cities are giving everyone, you know, two thousand eighteen is. ADU all, you know, come home free kind of year for, for people with ADUs, and maybe make it a holy site thing, kind of thing, and make it beyond, so. Anyway, so what I'm hearing from you is you'd like to make sure we have some designated time to talk about ADUs when we're talking about strategies.
Yeah, just, I, I would wholeheartedly agree with that, I think it's a, a really good mechanism. When you're talking about families aging and, you know, all of those kinds of dynamics, I think it's a really good. I don't know that it's a solution, but I think it's a really good contribution to what we're trying to do here. Um, the other question I had for you, Arthur, um, and I, I might just not be seeing it, um, I don't see anything. Under the households or the, or the housing that, that specifically talks about the student population, the college student population. It may be in here and I, and I kind of have been missing it, but, and I don't know, you know, what answers are to that, but.
First bullet, last word.
First bullet where?
Under types of households.
Types of households?
You're having me nervous for a second.
Okay.
Okay, so we've.
So that's, to me though, that's still talking about households?
Yeah, yeah, I, right.
Housing, like, like student housing?
I'm not, right, but I'm saying, but you've got them identified. So AD, trust me, ADUs is a student form of housing potentially, um, I could make that comment, but. This could, this list will work two ways.
Okay.
You'll look at, oh, wait a minute, none of the housing things deal with students yet, so come on, where's the student ideas? Or here are the housing ideas, you know, you, you can approach looking at the strategies using both sections of this list, okay?
Gotcha, yeah, that covers it, thank you.
Okay. All right? Okay, so. We're getting to a key moment, potentially, um, but I'm gonna, I, I thought, and I think it's because, I don't know if it's because it comes up in other cities too. But I'm going to ask you the question, because I think maybe you guys made this statement, is there an area in which the city can be bold? So I'm going to just throw that one out at you for a moment to sort of put out there as a potential statement to keep in mind as you go forward. If any of you have any thoughts along those lines.
Yeah, Arthur, I, I guess I have a comment, I've always thought that a lot of, um, fixed zoning is, is a little, it's a little constrained. Like, if, if you, so I guess what I'm getting at is I, I like the, the possibility, and we were just talking about ADUs. Um, is that, um, I guess, I would like to see the. I, I guess duplex and triplex, they kind of get a kind of a, they kind of a, I don't know if there's a rebranding in those names that you can get, but I think we've kind of moved. Moved away from some of the older versions of duplexes and triplexes, and I guess, I think the city could kind of be bold in, in. Enabling the capability of some of those opportunities within existing neighbor- neighborhoods that are currently not maybe zoned as such, but. Uh, it'd be, I think it'd be worth talking about at least. I just think it would help us reach that affordable component quite easily and, 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 and you reach the affordability by a lot of new construction. The size of the units may be significantly smaller, but, I mean, just enabling, I think it's worth a, a discussion to have that available. Is there any other commissioners? Think of anything else that they may want to say?
We can revisit this in the future.
We can revisit, yeah, we can, maybe it's.
You know, I just want to afford to put that in your brain, and maybe some of you have other, jump in if you.
No, I just, I do like that idea of duplexes and triplexes, especially with, um. Images that you had shown us early on at the get-go of homes that look very single family residential that are duplex. And I think that you could have current homes broken up and become duplexes too, so.
And I guess as long as we're meeting, uh, the parking capacity needs, it would, would, would probably double with a duplex possibly, so. Want to be cognizant of that.
Right. That's always what goes with bold ideas like that is, okay, but how do we protect it and protect the character, so, okay? Any other angles on boldness for the moment to note for your fellow commissioners that you'd want to put out there?
I guess maybe we'll revisit that, you know, a different day, I, I do like that question though, um, so, yeah, please bring it back to us.
Okay, so we'll keep that, we'll, we'll put that question on every agenda to see if. What, somebody walks in the door with a sparked idea for a bold approach, okay?
Well, let me toss that, well, first of all, a comment on, I, I think it definitely would be bold to explore strategies for. Converting single family homes to duplexes and triplexes, uh, especially if. The data shows us that demographically, we're, we've built a lot of large, single family homes and we're trending towards smaller households. Um, so, uh, that, I think that's a, a bit of a tough, challenging, uh, uh, not to crack, but. Uh, and then I just wanted to, a, a fellow planner, uh, tossed out what I think is a bold, uh, strategy in terms of ADUs is, uh. He said, why don't we just require all new single family homes to be at least plumbed? Uh, for easy conversion to ED, ADUs. Maybe, maybe a significant, uh, barrier to having more ADUs is just the cost of retrofitting a existing house, uh, to them. And if we, uh, built them that way, uh, for easy conversion, would that help?
And, uh, comments on each of those points, to the latter point, the one where I said I owned it, that town had made them legal. And, um, it was interesting to see how many people, when they advertised, sort of the Realtor community got, they go plumbed for ADU. Or plumbed for a granny, and that was a selling, that was a selling point for homes, um, just as a note sort of to his comment. Um, to his first comment, um, which is converting all existing to duplex or whatever. That may get at your original comment at the beginning of the meeting. Um, and there's a neighborhood up in Vancouver, if you're familiar with Vancouver, called Kitslau. And they had a neighborhood of classic old, you know, eighteen hundred Victorians in big homes, and it was becoming a rundown neighborhood. And what the city did is they said, what we're going to do is if you can, and they were very, you know, houses with great character, Victorian, et cetera. And, but it was, and right near Kitslau Avenue, that's why they call it Kitslau, so great bus service, near downtown. And what the city said was, God, we don't want to lose these homes, but they're obsolete. They just don't match the profile of households today, especially in Vancouver. And so they created like an overlay zone that said, if you will go through architectural integrity design. We will allow you to divide those up into as many as four units. And when you go into Kitslau now, they are, the homes have been rehabbed, they look beautiful, they allow, they had alleys, so they allowed them to add. Not only could they divide the main home, I think, up to four, maybe it was three or four, maybe it decided, mattered on the size of the home. And you could add on the top of the garage off the alley another unit. And incredible, and not only that, but the neighborhood character and flavor was just fantastic. Um, now, it was also one block or two blocks or three blocks from Kitslau Avenue with great bus service on top of all that. Um, so there's an example of where a neighborhood out of a market need in the city cooperated with letting that happen. I'm not sure our cities are there yet, but the point about big homes being built and, and things along those lines, and ADUs is the quick way to do it. Actually allowing them to be subdivided is a different approach that, I'm not sure the market's there now, but. Like, there are examples of communities where that it was undertaken to preserve a community, kind of thing, okay? So, um, now, I just also made a note in here, and this is also in the, the packet, which is that. You asked for some follow-up data, so we just want to make sure we noted that for you, so we did include in the back some information on Snohom- Snohomish County and Mill Creek. And we didn't clean it up or make it pretty, but we put it in there and we, Mike literally handwrote that, now you know Mike's handwriting, because you saw all the numbers handwritten in. Um, all the Bothell data, so you could compare it, so, because we wanted to see if this is what you meant when you were asking for some comparable data. Um, and if that falls in the lines of what you had asked for, so that was one follow-up. Um, we're not wanting to focus on it per se, we just wanted to give it to you so you have it with all the other data. Um, and then what are we seeing from local agencies and how it's been changing? We'll get that out of the folk, we have identified, you'll see that one of the focus groups, we want to be local human service agencies. So we think we can get at that through focus groups, I don't have anything right now, I can speculate, because we've done this with Issaquah, but we'll do that. Job trends in Bothell, we still need to do some checking around on that, but we are going to try to do that. Ties into that question that you had out there, and then I think we answered the question about what was done in Redmond to preserve manufactured housing, and we included the write-up in here too, as well. So those were the things that we also had as follow-up, um, so we want to make sure we're covering the things you've covered as questions, so. Um, at this point, we're ready to go ask the big question unless you have an, another follow-up question or something that was missed.
This is just actually relative to the, the Snohomish County data.
Yeah.
Really good information, some of it really surprising, um, and I guess. Is, is all this data, it says Snohomish County dashboard? And then in some places it says, I think, Mill Creek dashboard, are these, are all these numbers that we're looking at? That aren't Bothell, are they Snohomish County or are they Mill Creek, City of Mill Creek? Or do you know?
I pulled these off of, um, the website of Alliance for Housing Affordability, which is a, a Snohomish County group. Um, so they, they did one of these dashboards for each of the communities in Snohomish County. Except for Bothell, which I guess isn't a member of that group, since they're a member of Arch.
So if it says a, a Mill Creek dashboard above it, then that's specifically Mill Creek?
Correct.
If it has Snohomish County dashboard above it, then that's countywide?
Right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Mike, what was the name of that, uh, organization, Alliance for?
Housing Affordability, I believe, they have, um, it was formed by, uh, it's, it's a membership organization. Similar in some ways to Arch, um, formed just a couple of years ago. And they have, I think, uh, one staff person that's, uh, seated at the Housing Authority of Snohomish County.
Okay, yes.
One bold item, um, we have a pretty blank landscape when it comes to, um, the Canyon Park redevelopment and kind of making it north downtown. It would be nice, though probably impossible, but, um, to implement TDRs into that process. As a, you know, maybe a density bonus, and that could be used to potentially offset some of the. Like, open space procurement that Bothell's trying to go through, uh, whether it's Wayne or some of the other forests in the city.
Okay.
Question, do you want to keep TDRs, uh, TDRs or countywide, is that right? Or do you want to keep that within City of Bothell?
Um, currently, it's been a countywide progress program, but you could do a, a, a program internal to the city.
Right, so Redmond, right now, Redmond and Issaquah, I believe, have internal city ones.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Right, so you, right. Okay. Okay, yes, ready? So. The question is, we have given you four one-pagers essentially. We've given you a summary of your goals and policies, we've given you the, what you've done. We've given you this gap area statement page. Do you feel like, and it's funny, you used that word a few minutes ago, like some mission that helps drive us through. Do you feel like those documents give you that guidance to help you, in other words? Or do you feel you still need to have some more conversation, or by covering these topics and these plans and what we've done tonight? Has set you up pretty well, um, it's never, you're never going to be a hundred percent comfortable, I know that, but set you up pretty well for us to now. Start giving you lists of strategies and start talking about strategies, um, because you have a decent sense of the kind of issues in your community. Policy guidance, the needs out there, what you've been doing, or do you feel like you still need some other statement to make? Or do you feel like you still need some other statement to make?
It's a good question, um I missed looking at the bullet, I looked at him again, because I was, I started thinking about, you said TDRs and I was thinking TODs. And uh which is transit oriented development, um and and that certainly is a housing strategy. It's not necessarily affordable housing, but um should that be part of this discussion? Um you know, it sure seems like putting housing right next to infrastructure is exactly what we need to do. Um and and we are doing it downtown to some degree and, um but does that need to be part of this as well? It's not affordable housing per se, but it's it's along the same.
So this is where I would be saying, this is where I'm sort of saying, do we have enough here, is that. You have several statements in here that lead you to TOD and trust me, we're going to give you a list that's really long. Okay, you 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 saw, you've got a copy of the old strategy plan, it's a pretty long list, that will be in there, the question is. Do you need to say that more explicitly or is it in that first bullet under types of housing and we don't say TOD? But it sure is sort of saying TOD, right?
I guess I feel like.
And you could either, we could modify that first bullet?
Yeah, and it I I would agree, be great if you guys want to weigh in on this, but I I guess I feel like uh. Our, this whole discussion on housing strategy has been very focused on the affordability and that's great. Um but but we talked about this maybe a couple of months ago, what is the housing strategies, is it just affordable or are there other things and? And TOD I think is more than just. Affordable housing, it 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 really addresses. Traffic, it addresses infrastructure and it addresses a lot more things than just affordability and so, and I and I feel like our conversation has been. Affordability, so great, but I, so I think it might be good to put.
Okay, so what, so this is where I'd say, hmm, um because yes, there are affordability ones in here. But we have implications of increasing population diversity, we have low proportion of workers who work and live in the city. Which has nothing to do about income, we have provide, we do say provide for lower in the first bullet, we talk about homeownership, right? And the types of housing, so be a little more comprehensive, the first bullet has nothing to do with affordability, other housing types. Right, implications on, you know, ability to reduce transportation costs and when we looked at the capacity, it wasn't about cost, it was about. This is the kind of densities you have and this is where they're located, so that's where I'm sort of saying, boy, we tried to be. You know, we say things about um ADUs can help seniors stay in their homes, there is an affordability component to that, granted. But it's also as much about who it's serving, so um but I don't have a problem at all with. Putting in parentheses and clarifying that very first bullet under types of housing, because in my mind TOD is a natural fit there and I.
Yeah, and and it's just my my, kind of my take on it and it, but I'd love to hear from you guys, I guess, I feel like um. Transit oriented development is, there's a lot of different facets to it and and so part of it gets out of. You know, part of it gets into other other areas as opposed to just housing.
Yes.
Um but it is, but it is certainly a strategy that we could, that the city could encourage easily in the housing strategy and and would kind of serve a double. Function, if you will, but um.
So so let me ask.
If you guys have any comments on that.
First, define TOD a little bit more.
What what do you want, what, how much?
Is it, is all downtown TOD or is it something more specific?
A lot of it is, yeah, I mean, when you have apartments on a bus route, that's.
Right.
I mean, it might.
Without trying to get a sense, when you're saying TOD, I want to make sure if you're asking the group, we want to call it out, let's make sure we're understanding. What we're calling out, some people might, some people think TOD is the housing right at transit station, right? Not the house, the stuff that's a quarter mile away, some people say it's everything within a quarter mile of the transit station. So I just want to make sure in your mind, when you're saying that and putting that out there, are we talking?
Probably a less, yeah, my, in my mind, it's a little less strict definition, so in other words, the concept, right?
Okay.
Can people get from their house to a bus and go to work on a regular basis, that's kind of the.
Okay.
And we we looked at that in the downtown plan when we did that and and the quarter mile mark was kind of the magic, you know, this is how far people will walk. You know, that was for retail, but similar for buses, so.
Yeah, I I guess I couldn't agree more, I mean, I think we've got it in the bullet point, but I I want to emphasize it as we. Talk to the people as a, as an option on the survey, anywhere we can, um not related to housing, but. We sit in many meetings where people bring up congestion as one of their main concerns with Bothol, just getting through town, getting downtown to even go to a restaurant, so. Um being able to, I guess, focus development around areas where people can walk to work, but walk to a restaurant, walk to the store, that's. I think that's kind of critical for Bothol moving forward, okay?
Great.
Yeah, I I completely agree as well, and I think that one of the things that we could easily do is just change that sentence to add. Ability to reduce transportation costs and dependence on personal automobile ownership. To to some degree and and maybe even to lead off with implications on mobility options. And then build cost into the backend of it, because cost is gonna be a factor in people not needing a personal automobile. But it's not, I don't think the primary or only reason for doing this, but. Roger, is that kind of what you were thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I guess to. And we're also, we've got the types of households and I don't know if it's really a type, but if we had a type of household that rode the bus to work. You know, as opposed to using their, I don't think that's like the classic household type that we're kind of parsing out here, but um I don't know. I I I just bring it up, because I I would like to emphasize it somehow, so that when we go through the document, that is part of our thought process.
I I would be in favor of doing that, I think, basically what Roger's outlined there, Jason's picked up on. And the rewording that Jason was talking about.
Okay, can, I want to, I got the first part of your reward, did you get all the rewording?
I.
Okay, I want to make sure we don't miss a point, well, we're editing and if we get it wrong, you'll fix it, okay?
Sounds good.
You you were asking about um being ready to do a mission statement?
Yes.
If we were ready and.
Or if we've covered what a mission statement would with this document, what we've given you.
You know, just within our confines, I feel like we've got plenty of materi- you know, substance here to go ahead and do this. I guess my question to you is, is do we want to do a rough draft, take it out to the, because we're talking about having a dialogue with the community.
Okay.
Right, so do we want to do a rough draft that they can look at and then that would be a springboard for them? Or do you want to save the mission creation of it after there's community dialogue?
So what I'm hearing from you is it would be nice ultimately to have something like that, but the way to create it. Could be sort of a living statement that we start something, you respond to it, let the community respond to it to help shape it.
Oh, you know, we're gonna edit it, so.
I know, but I I added the community component part two.
Well, I I think that if we do want to make the community, be proactive and engaging the community, we're going to have to be prepared that. There's going to be some.
So you think we need that for the outreach, having some kind of mission statement would help that process?
I I would, I would think versus making them create it from ground up.
Well, we wouldn't, okay, I mean, we would, okay?
Or 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 the mission of what we would be doing would be different then, as far as finding out what their needs are.
Right, okay.
I guess I would agree with that in terms of uh having something for them to respond to, we had talked before about maybe having a. A group of questions, um it's kind of, maybe a similar, maybe a different format where. Here's what we're looking for from from for feedback from you guys.
Right.
Could have a mission statement too, but in my mind, if we have, if we have questions that we really want answers to, that we know the community.
Right.
Could help us with, that'd be really helpful in a conversation.
So.
Maybe save time.
Okay.
I don't think that comment helped us at all, but.
No, no, I.
As in terms of.
It's helping me formulate something, I want to hear all the other thoughts and it's helping me formulate a question for you, very related to the outreach part of the discussion.
I I mean, I think this is a good conversation, we might be getting ahead of ourselves and talking about outreach, but but what, I mean. What do we really want from the community in this process, do we want to let them know what we're doing, do we want to involve them in the process to a certain degree where. We get feedback and we consider it, do we want to collaborate with them and have them sit at the table and then we're willing to accept whatever they tell us? Or do we want to enable them to to make these decisions and then we'll we'll support whatever they do? And I think depending on what we want, what level of participation, we think we want to involve the community in. Then we need to determine whether it's premature to create a mission statement, because if this is going to be a collaborative effort. And we get ahead of ourselves and create a mission statement without collaborating with the community, then we're wasting our time. Or we're not being honest in what we really want the community to contribute.
Let me, okay, you, sorry, let, okay, so I'm formulating a thought here. Which is, I'm hearing interest in a mission statement for the purpose of the process. But you don't personally explicitly need it yet to help you do your work. Per se of starting to review strategies, that what we have here helps you enough to start that work, but you'd like. You think that's a product that should come out of this and you're still debating who shapes that and how much it's shaped by public versus. You guys, am I pick, am I, or my reading between lines? Too much.
Uh I I would agree, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is if if we're going to go to the community and ask for their input and we're going to accept that. And and not only accept it, but but run with it, then we should probably involve them in the entire process. And and even planning the outreach to say, you know, hey, community members, what what do you think we need to do for outreach? But if we're just going to involve them and say, give us feedback, we'll consider it, we'll come back to you, we'll make a decision, then maybe it's not as important.
I guess just as far as your open-ended question, um I think we should work collaboratively with the public, um. There's a lot of demographics that we're talking about in here that I don't think we touch, I don't know if you guys would agree, but you know, like the retired demographic. Um I I don't know if anyone here is a renter or not, but there's, you know, the apartment dwellers that we kind of want to hear from too, so. Um I think that was a good question, just to throw it out there, and I think we do need some help kind of crafting it before we just say this is our mission statement.
Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I I I would agree and and that's kind of what charged me with saying that is is we've talked about a lot of outreach that we're planning to do with different community groups. And to me, that sounds like a collaborative or at least a very involved process, and I want to make sure that we get that involvement kicked off early. If that's our intention, I I don't want to take kind of a half-baked plan to the community and say, this isn't anything like what we want.
Right, so keep a couple of things in mind, the very first paragraph, this is a strategy plan, you're not going out to the community and saying. We're going to change our ADU rules, you're saying, we want to look at ADUs to see if they're important, or we want to look at TOD. To see how important it is to try to make it more effective in our community, we're not saying we're going to change the TOD rules and we're going to let the heights be three stories higher. Around here and there, that'll be a very different public conversation, this is about knowing your community and what's important in the community. So that as we put a work program together of what's important, we've heard your perspective, so keep that in mind. I think that influences just sort of how much you have as input, now the other part. And we're jumping to the last item, but that's okay, um because it's related, um is that. In thinking about going out to the community, we have focus groups, we've talked about and we are talking about some kind of survey. And we're talking a little bit about some, if if that's enough, okay, and we don't have tons of staff and lots of things to do and everything like that. The idea, I'm trying to think if I'm skipping some. Can I wrap this and then we'll jump to education, so what I'm hearing is, yes, let's work on something here. I'm almost sort of hearing, it's okay for staff to take a first stab for something for you to look at. As part, but we can still get starting working on strategies, but you'd also like for us to try to pull together some kind of mission statement. We're going to build it from these four pages that we've been going over tonight, that's where we're going to get it from, okay, we're going to try to take those four pages. And give you something, all right, now, what I could ask you real quickly is, or not tonight, if you could. As homework, as we did give you the attachment, but now the attachments might make sense to you. We gave you some examples of how other cities try to quote pull it together, okay? And what would be helpful to us is if there is, if any of those approaches catch your eye and you kind of like it. Okay, so we gave you something from Bellevue, something from Issaquah, Issaquah was a shorter one, we gave you something from Kirkland. And we gave you something from Kenmore, and from what I'm hearing from you, I would probably start with Kirkland. That would be where I would probably try to work from, given what I'm hearing from you. Um something that's a morph between Kirkland and maybe something a little bit shorter than what Kirkland is, there's just like a two statement. There's a mission statement and then there's a little bit longer paragraph and from what I'm hearing from you, that's what I would probably be trying to pull together. And how we would populate that kind of text is by pulling from the conversation, the duck materials from tonight. Okay, now that might not look good when you see it, but that's, that would be my starting point for trying to bring something for you to start looking at.
Yeah, what do you got, yeah, I'd like to kind of hear everybody's comment on that direction, because that would, I guess that would start involving some staff time. And once we do that, want to be cognizant of if that's what we want to do.
As far as homework, are you saying that we just go ahead and write up?
No, I'm saying, I'm just asking for format.
For format.
Yeah. We can maybe do it, if you guys look at it and say, yeah, we like, we all love Issaquah's or Bellevue's or Kirkland's or. You know, if there's one that catches your eye and say, yeah, work from that to draft something for you then to review.
Does that work easier for you?
Yeah.
Ver- versus you create something and we identify what components we like and say.
I didn't follow, sorry.
Sorry.
No, no.
Does it, which works easier for you, do we submit ideas to you or? Or that you create something and we go and look and see what we like and how we would edit?
My guess is it probably from our point of view. Might be easier to do the latter, because otherwise we've got five things that sound different and then we have to keep everybody happy.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense to me.
Even though you all have good ideas, it's trying to marry five, you know, uh but would, if one of you is really, really interested. In helping with the first drafting of it, we'd be open to something like that, if one or two of you are like, hey, we'd like to, we'd like to take a shot at something.
Okay.
Or we.
And and I also be cognizant, there's there's two commissioners who aren't here tonight too, they might be interested in.
Well, whatever we do, it'll be for the whole group, but look, I'm just saying, the drafting process could be, you know. Us taking something for you or a couple of you taking the drafting for the group.
So Arthur, I'm, so I'm looking at three samples, Kirkland, Bellevue, and then we got this thing from Kenmore.
Yeah, which is very.
Like a totally different.
I know, that's why I'm sort of saying, I would be leaning more.
Is it, is it the same objective, I mean, is it the same kind of tool?
It had a different purpose, it had its own, every group.
I hope we don't do Kenmore.
Okay, that's fine.
So I I read through these and and I think that for format, Kirkland's a good format.
Okay.
But as far as content.
Right.
You know, I I hesitate to get involved in doing content until we have some public process or public outreach, sorry, this is a public process.
Well, I mean, another choice is you, you've got a, if we're doing Kirkland approach and you think that's a good way of approaching it. That's how we did it in Kirkland, we pulled out their plans, we pulled out this, we pulled out that and we drafted something, now. I'm one who am not uncomfortable putting something out to the community personally and saying, hack away at it, folks. Because if I don't give, what I find with citizens groups a lot is if you don't give them something to react to, it's hard for them. If you just leave it really blank and open, now, maybe we could structure it in a way that makes it more inviting for comment. You know, like these types of, you know, Kirkland's, I can't remember exactly how it's laid out, but I think at one point, it's like, and these are really important things to us. And we put in a populate one or a couple and then leave blank lines, like we need to fill in the others. So that it's clear that we don't see it as complete, I mean, that might be a way to do that, but I often find. Especially something like this, if you don't give something to people to react to, and you guys have been working on this for three or four meetings. Um you're going out to the general public, they'll have a really hard time trying to help you. But there's also another part of outreach that I haven't gotten to yet with the surveys that may help fill this in a little bit to where I'm coming from. It might make that feel a little more comfortable.
I I think sending it out open-ended with some some spaces to add to it, so that the community knows that these are ideas that we've come up with. But we're embracing their ideas as well is important.
I'm going to ask you to. I'm gonna ask you to sidebar that for five minutes until we get to the outreach part.
Sounds good.
Okay? Cuz I have a thought that might help you think why I'm saying some of the things I'm saying, and you may like it or not, and then we'll do it whichever. Okay, so Kirkland, am I hearing, take something like Kirkland and whatever, however we decide to agree. I'll come back, we'll come back before the end of the meeting, but that's a model to at least think about. As a rough approach, okay?
Yeah, bring that back to us then a little bit.
Okay, so, should we jump to outreach then? Okay, so on the last page, uh, page four. So these are the pieces that we've come up with, not anything that different from what we've talked about with you previously, but um, we are looking at trying to do an online survey. There are city staff who can, giving us good ideas on, it's not about just doing a survey, it's about how do you get responses? So trying to use different lists and things like that of people and trying to get out there. Do we give a little reward for people? Somehow you have a little drawing for a reward, that kinda stuff. I had the idea of pick your most popular food places in town and give people certificates to those food places that are real popular in town. You know, kinda thing for a drawing, who knows? But, um, and, but the survey in terms, and it says be done as either a single or two separate surveys. Okay, so this is sort of the point that I wanna make to you, cuz I've been sort of trying to get up to speed on how you do online surveys or how you reach out. And I had a gut level feeling on something that I did some reading that has reinforced the thinking along a similar, a line, which is we're dealing with a topic that people have ideas about, but they don't know solutions specifically. Okay, but they kinda know what issues are and what's important to them. Okay, people will tell you, well, you already, well, if you do, make sure there's enough parking, right? Make sure there's this, uh, we care about this in our community, and Issaquah it's all about, we're open space, man. Look at the mountains around us. That's what we are. We can't lose that, okay? There's things that character the community that are critical to them. I think what I've heard for Issaquah that may come up for you is you're quaint downtown. You can't lose that, okay? And it's like, what's I gotta do with housing? I don't know, but it's important enough that you better not think, not, not think about it. So what this one place I read sorta says is two surveys and something like this might be a good thing to think about hard. And in the first survey, you're not asking for answers or solutions, you're asking for principles and ideas and how they feel, what we were doing with you. The first couple meetings, okay? Ask their opinion on things that are kind of housing related. What kinda things do you think are issues related to housing in your community? And give them some choices, let them rank them, leave it open ended, let them fill in. And ask them four or five questions that get at things that they might think about or talk about. I have, when I go to a neighborhood party last time, what's with these investment buyers of my homes in my neighborhood? We have non-occupant, right? Give them a chance to sorta say what's on their mind, without it being solution per se. The second survey, and then you use that. And hopefully if we've done, my guess is there's gonna be a lot of overlap with what you said, because you're people in the community too. Right, you just, and, but you let the community, you hear what they say. The focus groups will do that as well a lot. A lot of the questions with the focus groups is the same kinda questions. Just what's going on here? How does it relate to housing? What are the issues? What's working well? So if you do that, you're sorta trying to get a feel for the community, just like we've been doing with you for the last month and a half. Okay, and you try to do that with a survey so that you're reaching as wide a range of different, like you say, not just people that we see listed here. And important to get different profiles, you know, the students and the this and the that, so that's why the focus groups that we have proposed. Then you do a second survey and that gets to some of the ideas you're thinking about. And that's where you might introduce the mission to. Because the mission will then, you'll use their words too to help write the mission. So you can maybe use that first survey as well as what's here to help draft a mission statement. And then you test the mission statement as well as some of the strategies you're thinking about in a second go round. Now you're talking more specific ideas. So that's food for thought, um, of how that might be looked at. Then for focus groups, you see we've listed the profiles that we think we need to identify and deal with as focus groups. Okay? And so we have education, senior center, faith, community conversation, which is means a group that's cross section, but they've been talking about the city a lot, and so we go to them. They've, um, the person who leads that has said they'll try to put us on the agenda in March. Human service agencies, local businesses. So those are the profiles that we would try to do focus groups around. If there's another that comes to your mind, um, we can do that. Then you have this combined with a community survey. That would hopefully give you lots of input that is more raw, not around specific strategies. Now, they'll come up, they'll, we'll give them different ideas, but we, it'll be just more, do you see, what are the, you know, sorta like these two sections that we just did earlier? What are kinds of households in your community that you think we should be thinking about in particular? What qualities of your community do you really care about that we should be conscious of? What kinds of housing do you think there could be more of in this community in twenty years? What kinda housing should there be in the community that may, that, or more of, or stuff like that? So the questions would be like that in the first survey. At least that's what we're sorta leaning towards.
Arthur, what do you mean by a community conversations group?
That's something that the, the city has, uh, launched, uh, or launched last year, uh, uh, an outreach, uh, effort uh, to get input from citizens, and, and so they've formed a group, uh, kind of a stakeholders group. And so we're tapping into that already formed group.
Right, and I was gonna say, we were going to invite you guys, so like when Issaquah did it, they had one, you know, one commissioner come to some of the, you know, focus groups. So we would invite you to attend. We don't need the whole group. They wouldn't be done at this time. These would be done when it works for the groups. But if you're interested and wanna go to one or two, we, that worked. I thought that was really helpful that they did that in Issaquah. And if you're up for that, we'd like to try to get one or two of you to come to some of these focus groups.
Well, uh, Dave, how does that work with regards to noticing if, if many of us wanna go to certain?
That's why I said one or two.
Okay, oh, two, two, okay.
And, and if you are interested, tell us which groups you're most interested in, so we can mix, match you with who you would like to listen to.
So you, you could have up to three without getting into, uh, uh, issues with the quorum noticing.
My impression is, is that this is very, very labor intensive. And I'm wondering, I'm thinking about expediency.
Right.
On this, so I'm wondering, the, the two phases of the survey, might that, that be able to be done in one sitting? A be, a, and, and the reason why I ask that is, is you've got people's thinking the problem and their creative juices going, and then you lay out alternatives for them, and then you put up your little wonderful boards and send people up to tag the biggest priorities. And would that give us enough material to create the mission statement from?
So.
And then, then have, and then create a mission statement based on those several meetings.
So, okay, so you're describing something different, which you'll see here, we're saying.
Okay.
Maybe we do that and maybe we don't. What we're saying is the survey is online or other ways for people who don't have access to the internet can get it. And is a survey where they just get it, fill it out, and they're done. The focus groups are you go into a group of similarly, similar people, and you talk to them for an hour. Hour and a half, depending on how much they wanna talk about the issue, and you just have a couple questions and you let them just talk. And they're the kinda questions I just told you a couple minutes ago, and they're not meant, they're meant to be more input on perspective kinda thing. What we're, now, the other piece of input for you that we have listed here is that at, at one of your meetings, we want to have the professional stakeholder types. So we do wanna have a meeting when you're looking at strategies where they come to you. The Realtors or the Rental Housing Association, the nonprofit group, the, the housing people who might be implementing your strategies. So we do want them to come to you at a meeting where it'll be like a panel conversation. And we might have to do it sort of like two different panels because the topics are so different. But we do also have as another input to you is bringing in some people who are the users and are the beneficiaries or whatever you wanna call it of the strategies you're looking at. The workshop, what I heard you describe sounds like the workshop. And we're saying, let's do the first round of focus groups, let's do the first round, the task force. I mean, the focus groups and the survey, and then see what we have and see if we need to do a community workshop or not. Again, keeping in mind what this is, it's a strategy plan. I can let you know I've been doing these for years, and this process we're doing this year with cities with this much outreach is infinitely more than we ever did in the past. And I'm not saying that's wrong, because we're not going to in that room tell them the solutions for ADUs. It's what do you care about, what's important in your community for us, so that we can rank the things we work on in the future.
And at this point, are you finding that, that amount of investment that you have on your end worthwhile?
I found the focus groups in Issaquah really worthwhile, and the surveys, we'll find out. I got three cities that are all lining up to do some surveys.
Okay.
And I saw one city jump right in their first survey to the answers, and I don't think they got very good, helpful input. And so that's why, again, did I come to you with so, almost all my most successful work with cities, I don't walk in the room and start talking about the solution, I start talking about the why first. And so that's why I'm saying in the first survey, it's about the why. And you've had a great conversations over a few meetings about that. Where we wanna find out is can you do the same thing through a survey online so that we can reach abroad? We got all the focus groups, got great input in Issaquah from that. I found that very helpful. So I do think these are worthwhile. You know, we've got questions already. We've already put them together. It's just finding, it's finding the people's the hard part for the focus groups. And then you gotta do seven, well, we had seven of them, so that's, that is a day plus of work, spread out over a couple weeks that we have to do. So it is time intensive, but I do find the conversations were really enlightening to me. It really helps you understand a community better.
I, I think the process sounds good with the, the initial survey where we, we asked the, the why, and then we have the focus group. And as you just said, then we take our mission statement back, not necessarily to the focus group, though they may be involved in the online survey. Be able to participate through that and then come back and speak at, you know, commission and later council meetings. So I, I think that that would be a good plan moving forward. Thanks.
Okay.
Arthur, do you have a, a copy of the schedule for the overall plan, how we're gonna implement this? I just wanna check, see where we are now, when you think this might be able to take place.
Oh, okay.
If we're on track.
So we're, we're trying to get the focus groups going and into March and to survey two. So we're hoping to have all of that by two meetings from now, or most of that part by two meetings from now. So you'll be in the middle of looking at strategies. So we're trying to get you that before you're coming to any conclusions. So we've, before that's done, we may have the next meeting, because that's where we wanna now introduce you to the strategies and just start walking through them and get you up to speed on them all and, and stuff. But by that second meeting, you'll have the experts come in, you'll have the community outreach, you know, you have the focus groups, the survey. So timing wise, we're trying to get you that by like the second meeting. Okay?
Yes, I think we're, it, it sounds like, I think, uh, on Jason's comment, uh, Commissioner Hampton, is that, yeah, I think, I think, I think I'm in agreement with, I think we've given, have we given you good, good guidance with regards to how we wanna proceed with it?
Well, I, I sorta put a proposal out there and I wanna be sure you're comfortable with it.
I'm com- I'm comfortable with that, the one that you put out there, so.
Okay?
Okay, looks like we're, I think we're, yeah, yeah, we're all in, all in favor of that. Thank you, Arthur.
We don't have any more for tonight. I don't think, right? No, we're, we've. No, I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna do that, we're done. Uh-uh, you did good. That was, the next slide is the backup, if you were having, no, this is good.
Okay, with that and looking at the schedule, uh, this, uh, topic will come back to you, is scheduled to come back on, uh, March eighth. Exactly a month from tonight.
And I know, um, we usually don't take, um, I don't know if we can take it this time, but I know we usually don't take testimony during a study session, but there, I did notice there were a couple people in the audience who, I, I guess maybe there's an opportunity if they wanted to say something, they could come up and state their name, their question. But maybe it just would be, there wouldn't be any conversation, basically more of it, just a question to us, cuz, does that sound okay with everybody?
Yeah, I was just gonna say we could go ahead and close the study session and open it up to comment.
The study, study session will continue, so, uh, there's, there's no need to, to, to close it.
Okay, great. I guess at that time, I guess at this time I'd like to, um, I guess they, I don't know if they have to do with this topic or, or not, but there are a couple people in the audience and wanna give them the opportunity to come to the microphone if they had any questions.
Or not.
Yeah, or not, this is, yeah, you don't have to, and.
Can, can you come up to the podium, please?
Oh, you don't have to.
Yeah, and if you could just state your name, uh, for the record, and, uh, please hold your comments to three minutes.
Okay. Uh, my name is, my name is Danielle Olson, uh, and I wasn't actually expecting to speak. So, uh, I'm, I don't know if this is the right, if I'm on the right track on this. This is the first meeting I've been to, so I don't even know if I'm following correctly. But I'm, I'm very interested in the transfer of development rights that you were talking about, and also in the, um, tran- uh, transit oriented development, uh, that, um, Roger, you were also mentioning. And I have, this is something I made in GIS. Um, it's hard to see. What it is, is it shows, it's a walkability map for the Parks and Rec, uh, department. And we started, uh, in downtown over here on Main Street, which is right here. It's hard to, I'll, I'll pass it around, and then up here over in the Canyon Park Business Park. And they meet in the middle of the North Creek Trail. So when you're talking about the, um, housing and affor- and affordable transportation, you might wanna be really thinking about what that actually means. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I guess that's all the, uh, all the comments tonight from public. So, um, I guess with that, we, um, we'll, we'll move on, uh, from the study session. And, uh, is there any old business?
No.
And reports from staff?
Yeah.
Any member reports? Okay, can I, um, I guess with that, I think we've given you enough guidance tonight as Arthur. And thanks, you know, thanks to Arthur and Mike for, for sticking with us and giving us such good information. I really appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you guys again soon, um, in March. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn then?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we are adjourned.